Call to order of the January 22th Stakesboro City Council meeting. I would like to ask Councilwoman John Rigs to give our invitation and lead us in the place of allegiance, please.
Lord, thank you for having us here today. Thank you for allowing us to be here and hopefully we'll make good decisions in your eyes. We thank you for the men and women abroad and here at home who protect us every day. For these things, we give you thanks in his name. Amen.
I pray for you, for your life in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice
Okay, we'll start our meeting today with our first item, item number 3A is a presentation of a proclamation for the NAACP's 105th anniversary. I'm not going to read the whole proclamation, but it will be given and presented to them this Friday evening when they convene their annual meeting here in Stakesboro. I'm just going to read a few things from it just for you guys. If you want a copy of it, you can certainly get that. Whereas the NAACP continues to obtain its goals through the nonviolence and to effectively achieve its objectives through direct action, litigation, legislation, and political action. And whereas the Bullock County branch has worked tirelessly to eradicate racial discrimination in employment, housing, public accommodation, in the courts and in every aspect of life, serving as the conscience of Bullock County since its founding. And the Bullock County branch has served the citizens of Bullock County as a communications link on health, housing, and economic development issues. And the Bullock County branch has lifted the proud heritage of people of color through annual celebrations and events at various venues in Bullock County. And whereas the Georgia State Conference of the National Association of the Advancement of Colored People, the NAACP, will host its first quarter meeting and Civil Rights Institute on January 24th, 25th, 2014 at the Avery Center for the Arts in Stakesboro, Georgia. And whereas the theme of the conference is Moving Georgia Forward, where the work of the branch and youth units from across the state will be recognized in the area of education and community outreach. And now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council members of the city of Stakesboro, Georgia, who hereby honor the memory of those who founded the NAACP for their vision and service they rendered to our nation, state, and county. The mayor and council members of the city of Stakesboro congratulate the NAACP on its 105th anniversary and expresses appreciation for its significant contributions to social change. Thank you. Our next item, I'm going to ask Richard Deal to come and present the fiscal year 2013 account through that CAFR. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'm going to mention to the council of the service and the city officers to give a perfect interview there, which Bill Deal, I'm just going to try to go through some of the highlights and probably keep it brief. As you go through some of the highlights and you're going to answer some questions you might have, let me know if you need to be individually at some point if you have one or two things in detail. Does anyone have a copy of the document? Just, of course, there's a lot of information here, a lot of good information, you can access, discuss, and evaluate, it's good summary of information that you can look at. Just kind of point out a few things in the financial statements. Government-wide financial statements are on page 13 and 14. The government-wide functions that you see puts the government activities, first column is business-type activities, second column also includes the public debt for the city, which is the downtown central government authority. Just to point out, there on page 13, total assets for the city on the government-wide is $99,833,000. So the city is almost $100 million in asset values. Of course, your major assets were capital assets. Capital assets represent about 77.2 million of the city's assets. Capital assets for the year increased by 7.2 million, about 10 percent. Their total liabilities are $27 million approximately. So your assets, what's your liability position in that position at June 30th was $2.8 million approximately. And that increase, total net position increased by 4.3 million, about 6 percent increase in total net position. You can see that there in that position, unrestricted net position was about $5 million. Of that net position, you see about 6.2 million is kind of the capital assets, in the added assets, capital assets, that's the capital assets less the related debt. The next page is the state of activities on a government-wide basis. On the left side at this column, government programs and functions, for example, general government, insurance, corporate safety support. Then it lists the expenses in that first column related to those various functions. And then the next three columns are program revenues that are directly related to those related functions and services. And then you get your net, your cost of providing that service. And then down below is the general revenues that kind of fund those services you could consider. If you sit down and bother, for governmental activities, changing net positions, a decrease of $187,000. And for business-type activities, it was an increase of $5,666,000.
Mr. Deal, I don't think we have, well, that's not my sheet, my looking around, I don't think we have the budget. We have the sheet that came from you.
Right, that's just.
We're just going to look at the letter, the summary, and that's what most of us have. So I guess, you know, if you want to address columns, you can, but.
It's in your drop box.
Okay, that's what we'll look down over, some of us will look at. I guess some of the questions that we get is kind of in general, I don't want to interrupt you there, is, you know, you've been doing this for us for several years. You know, are we moving forward in a direction that the accounting wise you guys are pleased with? Are there some suggestions that we, accounting wise, you like or don't like, or?
Right, well, the overall net position, you know, as I said, the city has increased. As you can see, this past year, there's a lot of investment in the capital assets and infrastructure. All the enterprise funds did well, and it don't make no sense if we don't have numbers to look at to reveal. But all the enterprise funds showed an increase in operating income of the enterprise funds. There's a lot of spin out of swash projects, you know, life spend, out of swash new life spend, water sewer fund projects.
Are there any funds that concern you, you know, if you see, is there a trend that's moving over the past couple of years, you know, you're all worried about, you need to take your fund, or you need to take your period?
No, actually, the one that really looks a lot better is the internal service fund, the health insurance fund. In the past, you know, in 20 years, you had deficits in that fund, you know, had one of those deficits this past year on the internal service fund for the insurance is actually the internal service funds in total had a $798,000 increase in that position. They had in that position of $869,000 in net position assets less liabilities, $732,000 of that to the government insurance for people in that position. And one of the big reasons is the claims in the health insurance fund had large decrease. This past year, there's $3,690,000. 2012 was $3,690,000, so it was like $821,000, a 21 percent decrease in health insurance fund.
Richard, you might point out that there's some future liability with health costs that.
Right.
That's something now we have to address, we haven't had a pass that we were starting addressing.
Right, that's going to be the other person's goal, the benefits liability, that's for health insurance for retired folks, that's the liability that's reflected, it's allocated right now. It's approximately, the amount that's accrued right now is approximately being five, being whatever, without that spread over the enterprise funds and the government, general government, the general fund, the government-wide level. And so that's, that's million five is expected, but you're accruing for people that are working now that you're expecting to pay in the future. The city now is paying that, paying to go as those people retire, steps up that money aside to that liability. It's a million five liability sitting on the books, it's a future.
That's a million five today.
That's a million five today.
And what did you project it out 10 years from now, or of the existing workforce as it retires, you have projected it out to what?
Actually, we're just projecting, we have an actual rule study done every two years, they're projecting 4.2 million.
For the workforce as it exists without additional hires?
What you're doing is accruing, getting that liability as they work, so that's why it's a million half. But based on the workforce right now, if everybody's stayed until they retire and paid their health insurance after they retired, for the spouses, the cost to the city, $4.2 million, and the city has to do the money, society, taking time off.
And just to be clear, there's nothing that's been put aside for that at this point, correct? And that doesn't take into account if the number of employees were to increase? That's just the existing workforce as it is today?
That's the policy, if policy changes, that's, you know, a lot of the differences in the workforce.
And there is some ambiguity in that because we don't really know what changes and what would be expected in coverage federally mandated, how that could be affected as well. So that liability could actually be greater than what we know at this point, is that correct? Okay.
I just wanted to know where the deficit, you know, to the budget maximum, you know, the government can, project in percentage, what's the situation?
Can I ask a question about that, if you don't mind? On funding of the shooting range from the hotel motel tax, we agreed to fund $500,000, is that correct?
Right.
And we're.
This was your first, I know you did this, this.
And we are getting hotel motel tax to be a fact of what, a year? That extra penny, $125,000, is that correct?
I think that's right.
Four to five years to collect what was closed? Assuming that collections came in, that particular rate didn't increase or didn't decrease, correct?
That's kind of the main thing, thanks for your question. If you'd like to answer the other question, because I have it for you, that's a good thing. And the other letter we have is just required communication, there's something that we have to point out there. It's required.
Questions? We appreciate it, thank you again.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
Okay, there's someone else, Ms. Sue. Did anybody else to make a public comment? Okay. We'll move to item number five, which is a consideration of a motion to approve the consent agenda. On our consent agenda is an approval of minutes from the January 27th meeting, and also a consideration of a motion to approve a water sewer agreement between the city of Stakesboro and Rinson LLC for the extension of the city sewer to property on 301 South. Do I have a motion from council to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any discussion? Okay, no discussion. I will ask council to signify approval for consideration of a motion to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Consent agenda has been approved. Okay, our next item is item number six, which is consideration of a motion to approve the adjustment of a police department position of part-time dispatcher to a position of full-time. I will ask Mr. Wendell Turner to come to the workplace.
Mayor, Council. The police department is currently seeking your approval to leave the current part-time dispatch position to full-time. Allow me to read a few things, this should be impacted, but I just want to ensure our coverage to get a broad understanding of why this is coming forward. Currently, this is a 29-hour-a-week position that helps cover the dispatch center that has been part-time since July 13. Basically, this position was a rover between all the shifts that helped build in the holes that helped to load. This position is very difficult to fill, it should be work scheduled, which is night, weekends, holidays, it's a building, high roll, and it has a part-time placement effect which is obviously in the 29 hours, which is really good. The current employee has ten for resignation. This, which is, which is going to accept a full-time position elsewhere, should actually go and work for another, another dispatch within our region. She recently was hired, $87,000,300, she's been with us a little bit, she was really good for paid group, discussing that with the staff, supervisor, support services, the business, she shared her own, and we're all agreeing that we would really like to get this position to full-time. This will bring all the number of dispatchers in our dispatch center to seven. Now, I don't know if you'll recall or not, but it's been several years back, maybe about, about four years ago, the dispatch center actually had four full-time dispatcher positions in it, and there's some attritions, changes, decisions that were made, that one of those positions was never backed, and that the budget plan ended up actually just pulled. So we leave the running, six dispatchers, and then we were in, in July 13, which Frank and Cass did, went to a part-time, and hope that we will be able to do that. For obvious reasons, this position will help us add better coverage for insurance on call service that come into the district department. Our average call service a year, between $75,000 and $80,000 call service by our district, and that comes straight to our dispatch center, and also comes in on the one system, well, it still counts as a call to the district manager of the region. It'll also help operations with police radio itself, and operations with the GCI, CIC, criminal, that's for the officer, for other tags, driver flags, and one person information. And it'll also help alleviate some overtime problems that we are having by having to build a part-time position, and some scheduling conflicts. Furthermore, with the addition of the pre-made patrol officer positions that you guys are gracious enough to give us this year, the July 1, we are in the process of, we've advertised twice to fill these new positions. We had three backfills, and we had three random positions, so out of 64 applications, we were able to fill three, but it's still making three open. So we are in the process of setting sort of, we're talking tomorrow, and we also have some non-circumstantial interview after that. I say all that to say, most of those guys are in-house, and they're on the road, mild share radio, going to include several of those three positions at the end, so if that will have an impact on the community, we presume. I believe that this is, this will help us get somebody in there to be more of a long-term employee. As you know, it's very complicated, hard people, have them retrained. Our dispatch center is centered with several to the police officers that we have, and they have to go through a training force, and then obviously they'll have to go through some, go through some on-the-job training, and we're looking at about probably a three to four month training up on the mediation option, or they're allowed to sit unready for the first time. And then they have to take some, take some, take some. I believe also that the money over this in our line of personal cost could be absorbed because we've had turnover throughout the year, because we always have some turnover, but the biggest turnover is we haven't filled three new positions, so, since July, so along the six months before, of police officer positions, we're looking at a very small increase in our personal line of cost. I can take any questions in the division. I can tell you that in meeting with the supervisor over there, after she said, well, I just maintain their schedule, and she said that instead of that person being a rover between all the shifts, they would, they wouldn't care much, they would stay the line schedule, which would be beneficial for bringing somebody in there and maintaining somebody for the position, that it would always give them, almost give them, two dispatchers, full-time coverage, two dispatchers in our dispatch center, all time. It'd be getting us very close to that, which has been a goal of ours for a while, depending on what we do as a city, as mayor and council, so as we get them both in the police department, our goal will probably be to continue to add some additions, part-time, we give a seven, four time, one part-time, and cover up some additional positions, and then maybe two years down the road, ask that, it'll pull that, that'd give us a total of eight, and that'd give us full coverage to make whatever kind of dispatch center, 365,000, but right now, we're not quite there, partly, and I believe that this will help fill out our needs with the new positions, we're about, kind of covered, depending on the citizens. We have to try to address those.
So for the number of calls that you're getting, do you feel like from a safety perspective, you need to, as it goes in the future, have two people there to cover it? I mean, would that be what would be a typical or a desired result?
That would give you the full amount of coverage that you have to serve.
Okay.
That's all we're likely.
So.
If you're comfortable with adding this full-time, it would probably be about 60 to 70 percent coverage, full-time coverage, which is pretty good. Whereas right now, we're, I suppose, having two there all the time, but right now, we're just kind of bloody calling them part-time.
So what's a, what's a critical point where you would not be comfortable, if you had 50 percent coverage, 40 percent coverage?
If we add new police officers over in three, which, I hope it's what we do next couple of years, if we add about the same amount or more, then I would, I would be comfortable adding a part-time, I'd be comfortable adding seven, and that, based on the call service and clarity in that division, it would be profitable. But it really depends on what, having the load of this department coming in, and the officer ready to track, anytime you have an officer, you can add an officer to the rate now. Where I see this works to do a lot of multiple, this time, the area is a bad squad, they really should, they still do a lot, with ancient radio, telephone, working the computer, building the force, basically, officers is pretty busy now.
Let me ask you something. And as this city grows, that will create a lot more attractive, am I right?
Yes, sir.
And the person that, we've already seen, I had her put in such a foot, the lady's working part-time now, she had offers somewhere else.
She got offered full-time doing the same job.
Full-time, yes. And she was, she was, you see, to keep her, of course, it was only acting to train some medicine, she's good at what she's doing.
Yeah, she was absolutely all right.
Yeah, all right.
We tried to build her, the city resident council asked it, she's always been a good job, so she's, it's just, if you want privilege, if I don't have to call, I'll walk out of here, because I am, she's that good, I really would do it, she's amazing, good. I started last, I'm going to try to get her, she's real good, she was really good, all the ladies off. Thank you.
Any more questions from council?
Is it the benefits that, the reason she was leaving? She needed the benefits or weren't the benefits?
Well, the benefits and the pay, and obviously the hour work she was training every week, and the schedule was not consistent schedule, she, she bounced around, it wasn't consistent, she was building, she was rover, and that far, she was, you know, paying.
So with this position, there would be no rover down there, is that correct? So everybody would have a consistent, stable schedule, is that correct? Any further discussion, question? Okay, do, I have a motion to approve the adjustment of a police department part-time dispatcher position to full-time.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Second, there's a second.
Okay.
I'll just write.
Okay, back on that. Anyway, I will ask council to vote, who approves? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Next is a consideration of a motion, whoops, got the glasses on, consideration of a motion to reclassify administrative support position to a communications supervisor grade 16 in the police department communications division. Mr. Grant.
I'm the grand director of the mayor's office. All the information, all the cabinet as well, I've read through it. I said to all of you, the paid agents supervisor basically, I've told them, it's not, remarkably exactly certain their capacity with administrative assistant slash communications officer, according to the training here at the captain, at that time, the training here at the captain, several supervisors, subsequently, the police department was reorganized during that time, and the captain and training here no longer supervised the communications division, it's left the current number, the responsible, the overseeing communications division. They pretty much remain in that title as a administrative assistant slash communications officer, and they also supervise, I think, full-time, or part-time communications officers. According to this year's budget, 2014, said that person's actually classified administrative assistant, however, the active communications supervisor. And that, Jill, basically, your classification is to, less than, this position is reclassified to a major 16. If you have to see your packet, I do have position summary, the other cities, other cities, we'll give you positions internally, we're very comfortable on a secondary level, in the same rank, we're able to, we're able to create senses, you know, set the positions out. And basically, this technicality is something that just needs to be changed, and we have to, uh, like.
Okay, do I have a motion to reclassify administrative support position to a communications supervisor grade 16 in the police department communications division?
Sure.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Addendum item eight is consideration of a motion to amend the adjustment of the GIS technician position in the IT department from a grade 14 to grade 15. Mr. Grant.
Mr. Senior, I have a job position for a GIS technician. We currently actually have a GIS technician position in the water sewer, that is every 15. There's a GIS technician position, IT department is great, both of those positions are very similar in nature, we do the same thing. Basically, the main difference between the positions is, one is internal, the one is external, they will collect data and put it into the GIs system. Once again, this is just a mentality, pretty much to make sure that position is always on the field, and probably some paid for, so, request to have a position reclassified to a grade.
Is this one of the reclassified recently?
Yes, that's correct.
From?
Well, no, it wasn't reclassified, it was created, it was created that position, that's correct.
The position we're talking about reclassifying was created recently?
Yes, created, yes.
Okay.
To give some people more attention.
Well, I.
To more better match their job duties, maybe it would be better to have it created.
No, should be, should be, should be, you should have created that position.
So initially, it was not what you feel like would have been correct, great, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
This will weigh too. This look way to affect grades, yes?
This will play to this person being, plus that a bit to a, to a, to a fourteen to fifteen.
Do I have a motion to amend the adjustment of the G I S technician position in the I T department from a grade fourteen A to grade fifteen A?
No.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Addendum item nine, do we have any other business to be presented from city council?
Oh, one, I would like to, uh, nation, if I could, I, I place a shield, everyone's, uh, position, and we want to point out, this is from the two thousand six National Fund Code, the first, the third, Fund Code, this, um, it's the same, uh, statute, uh, section, four zero three, that's a more private public facilities, kind of attention that you know, of, of, uh, facilities in town that aren't offering, uh, public public facilities, and we're going to start doing, a, uh, investigation that wants to determine, we're trying to encourage them to, and they don't, uh, resist, basically, stick off, but they have to, and in, in the, 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 they have, um, public facilities, they can have facilities for their employees, and separate facilities, both public or one facility, sure above, and, um, will, uh, if we don't, we're not successful, and everybody will back the council for some sort of action, but I think we've passed, I don't think, I know, we've passed a, a ordinance recently that gave a way to deal with this situation, so I just wanted to make counsel, where if you may get some calls, that, um, those foster kids, that I want to stretch it, give that, and, and they don't, they let the copy of this, and, um, basically, requested to, um, have that facilities, that public facilities, so that was just for information, just one push on, on, you know, make you aware in case you do get involved. Any questions that brought up for the panel?
Is there a group of businesses you're particularly targeting, what do you mean? Why don't you just give us a heads up, and tell us what the call was about?
Uh, I think, uh, we more likely are going to start off with convenience stores, restaurants, those that serve food, and then, uh, and possibly, uh, branch out from that part, but that's the initial, um, focus of our, our investigation, will be those convenience restaurant facilities. This problem came up the other night, I, I, at Kelly's Food Market, I had college equipment, you tell restaurants, well, we don't have none, practically, we don't have them, okay? So, I notice it's a state public, you must have one, there's a lot of problems coming from now, or maybe the stores operated by the England, or whatever, we'll go and call, but, uh, I have another store out here that's been taxed, grocery, or one guy, they said, I would fall for this, I think you should bathroom, and the restroom, and I'm spending money, I know it's high, or, or this is excuse that they're, you, so, you know, it kind of makes good sense to score this, you know, inspect these places, and see, if you couldn't look to take public's money, it goes further than that, providing, paying for these people, restroom, or kids, whatever, I don't think we just make this up, and I'm a witness now that it's true that they're doing this, and they got my attention, so I want them to continue to get my attention by going back, and, you know, that they must do this as soon as possible, because it is the law. We're not going to signify these, uh, specific segment of our, you know, population, we're gonna, we'll check all the stores, and everyone will be notified if they do not.
I just wanted to know which segment was at the top of the list.
Okay, sure.
Well, I, you know, I just have to ask a question. So, our code enforcement will walk in and say, let me see your bathroom, do you have a public bathroom?
Uh, we've got a sign, vision, and heck, correct.
I mean, that's because when, you know, we get calls, I kind of want to know, how, how, how would that work if I'm sitting in my, my place of business, and code enforcement were to walk in, how, what, how would that play out?
In health pharmacy, should be doing the same thing, so, I don't know, you know, we're coordinating with them, so, they actually do an inspection of the cleanliness of the facility, we do, we check if they have facilities.
Okay.
I think, I guess theoretically, a little bit of business likes, you could do it in five.
That would be, that would be the first step, can I, I was, uh, Alvin, because it was, we addressed that in the ordinance, uh, do you mind, what, please?
Well, as part of our, actually adopted the international plumbing, uh, part of our building, and we adopted some procedures for enforcement, building, uh, technically there is violation of the international plumbing, uh, there are violations of the ordinance and, uh, we either seek to enforce it through administrative procedures, we adopted enforcement building, or I believe to enforce it through, we should, simply the violation, ordinance violation, we can be, yes.
Is anybody grandfathered in?
No.
Okay. I mean, I think, I think that's.
You have that one, your international plumbing.
I mean, I'm just, I'm just asking, okay, somebody said, well, I've had this here for seventy-five years, and you passed an ordinance, and now I have to go and fill the bathroom.
It requires research, and that.
Okay, I mean, I just, I would like to be able to, to answer that question if it were proposed, that's all.
I would, as you say, if you're just walking down the street and going, kind of turn it off, now you're ready, or you can say, I don't have one, whatever, fine, but convenience stores, if, that's the problem I have, that's where I start, I like to start looking first, and then after that, you know, that, that the chip forward you make, but this is the problem right now. I mean, you know, I hate to say this, but they're here in our, our God-free country, they're making this God-free money, sending it back, they'll have a God-free bathroom where the people can eat, that was it, it should, it should have been a problem, I mean, you know, here's what it is, raise your hand.
That's all I have, I don't know if any department has, has anything they'd like to run the council, I don't know, does anyone think that, that's, address?
I have something.
Yes?
Um, our alcohol, it's, uh, talking with the city, um, you know, we talked about revamping it for a long time, and it's still got a bunch of Band-Aid going, you know, sometimes, some places that contradicts itself, uh, I'd like to see us have a, um, a work session, hopefully, not a long one, I think everybody, we've been over this many times, uh, uh, Alvin already has a, has one, a good one mapped out, and, uh, you know, have him sit, sit and talk about it, and then, uh, go on in the meeting, and do it.
We want to work the schedule, that was Ms. Sue, as far as, um, establishing a work session, you think we want?
Yeah.
Do that in five, or maybe three.
Any other business? Okay, do we have any public comments, Ms. Sue?
No.
Okay. Okay, any consideration of a motion to enter into executive session to discuss personnel matters and potential impending litigation in a court, so the law is listed on the agenda. Do I have a motion to do that from council?
So, will.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? Please signify that you agree by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, enter into executive session, thank you.